It's now streaming live on Facebook.
Okay, good to go.
All right. Well, and I see Dave Hales says he's on, but I don't see him yet, so. Should we get started?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, welcome everyone to the Donna Poppy zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This is our regular meeting night on the second Tuesday in September 14th. We have one item on the agenda tonight. We have all our members here. And so Pat Pressey, Dave Hale, Don Nugabauer, Kevin Sharp, myself as chairman, David Tessier, our secretary, Donna Alnut, our attorney, Jamie Sutphen is with us tonight. And oh, Bob Rodriguez is here, code officer. And in addition, we're we have a member of the town clerk's office here with us tonight. She's going to be attending our next several meetings. Mary Ann Foal, right?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. And we also have our applicant, Richard Coats. Am I pronouncing it right, Coats?
It's Cody.
Cody, all right. Richard Cody, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Okay.
Dave, Dave Hale, can you hear me?
Yes, Dave Hale, you're here.
I'm here. I've just had trouble trying to get on, that's all.
All right, we saw that you had clicked on and so if you're listening, we just started and I introduced everybody and so.
Okay.
Glad you're here. So we have one application from Richard and Lisa Cody variants for variances, several for a property located at 2964 Pompey Hollow Road. And as a footnote, part of this property is located in the town of Casanova in Madison County. They are requesting a subdivision of this property and they need the variances before the planning board can approve any kind of subdivision. So I have a note here that says the application fees have been paid. The neighbors within a thousand feet of the property have been notified and the town of Casanova has been notified as well. What else? Also, we we have an issue tonight that the county planning review has not been received. And we have to admit that the it's not been received from the county because it wasn't sent to the county. And so we are not going to be able to make a final decision on this tonight. But we will go through the the meeting and the hearing because everything's set up for it. And at the end, I'd like to take at least a straw poll of of the members to see how they would vote. And so that we we know we're set for next time and could make just a formal decision at the time at our next meeting. So with that, I will continue. So application from Rick and Lisa Cody and their address is in Fayetteville, New York. So the the property location, as I said, is 2964 Pompey Hollow Road, tax map number 240405 in Pompey and of course a different tax member number in town of Casanova. One thing I hope all the members got is an app she called attachment to the ZBA application. And I'm going to read most of that because that talks about the various variances that we're we're going to be dealing with tonight. It's a little bit complicated, but they're each one of themselves is fairly simple, so. They all regard, they all are regarding relief from section 165 of the code for scheduling limited use of land and buildings. And there it is right, right on your screen if you didn't get it. So these are all of these are taken right off of that schedule in the in the back of the coded the zoning book regarding a farm zone and this this property is own farming or farm zone.
Hey, just a quick note here on the on the application, it's got the date that submitted as 2017. Is that, is that an issue? Is that a matter?
It says contract purchaser closing Friday of 2017.
And then up at the top, I mean, is that?
Oh, yeah, date paid to 1917.
That's, that's strange.
Yeah. We just considered a typo, is that?
Could that just be a typo 20, make it 20?
No, there's two, two applications.
We
there maybe.
Says date submitted and they paid to 1917. That is strange.
There was an original application done when we first, this, this has been quite a process. We've been going back and forth with an attorney on this for the better part of, this almost coming up on three years.
Oh.
And I finally decided to just do this myself because I wasn't getting any help. And Jamie was very nice to go through all this with me and basically point out what was going to happen as a result of the division of these two lots. So subsequently, the correct zoning and planning board applications were submitted the end of July, but there was an original one done back on that, back on that date.
Okay, so you've been working on this for a while.
This has been going on for some time.
Well.
He submitted the application to me back on 6120.
Okay.
And then it was revised and updated, so so what we have now is is a complete application finally with all the the attachments and so forth.
Okay.
It was a little, it's a little confusing.
Yeah.
There's a little turnover up there, so that made things a little.
It did, yes.
And then COVID.
Yes, why not throw that one right on?
Yeah. So I'm going to read these. There are well, maybe, I don't know how to approach this. Has everyone seen the map so they got a rough idea of what this is about?
Yeah, look, damn, I drove by it also.
Okay. So if I read these, will they make some sense? I hope. There's, there's a.
Why don't we pull up the map and then when you're reading them, we'll look at them one by one. Can you see the map?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, if you can explode it a little bit, I wouldn't mind because.
There you go.
There we go, yeah.
I wrote your numbers on mine so I can read it in my hand here, so.
Does that help?
Yeah.
It does, thank you.
So by my math, you own a total of six and a half acres covering both towns. And you can correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers, but to just give approximate.
That's correct, yep.
You, you want to divide in the to the east and west, the center horizontal line in the middle of the property. And to divide your seven acres, six and a half acres into lot one would be about four and a half and lot two would be a little less than two acres.
Absolutely.
Both towns.
Right, right. And for for our purposes, we're just concerned with what's in our own town.
Right.
Other informations for informational.
That's right. So the town line is shown, a vertical line right in the middle of the property and that's the town and county line. And so lot one is our concern in Pompey and that's at the top. And oh, I can even read that on there, 1.4 acres. And lot two is 1.3 acres. Well, the requirement in the zone is two acres, so each of those lots needs a variance from that two acres down to the 1.4 or the 1.3. Next, lot one, the lot depth that you see right at the top of the map is shown as 199.55 feet. And there's a requirement of 250 feet for the depth of a lot. So that's, I guess that's number three. Next one on lot one, front yard setback for the bottom of the building is requirement is 50 feet and this building is 48 feet. So that requires a two foot variance for that barn. Now, that's number four, number five on lot two, the front year, front setback is 50 feet from the highway boundary and the actual setback for that house is 33.1 feet. So we need a variance for that. That's number five. And then the last one on lot two, the side structure and one of the barns is 39 feet from the Route 20 line and that has to be 50 feet as well. So that's variance number six. So as I said, it's a little complicated, but each of them in their own way is I think fairly straightforward. Any questions on any of that? And, and the whole reason for needing a variance is so that the owner can go back to any financial institution or future owners or whoever and say, yes, we, we need and comply with all town zoning laws and standards. All right. Pardon me while I shuffle papers here, but. Do we have any other information that you, that anybody knows of that needs to be discussed or distributed tonight? I think that's all I've got. Okay. So does the applicant have anything to to add or do you just want to make, would you like to make a presentation on?
No, I think, I think I just like the board to know.
Excuse me, Dave, would you like to open the public hearing?
Well, I should unless we have something else. So let's, let's do that.
I'll make a motion, Dave.
Okay, do we have a second?
Who did the first, who motioned?
That was Dave Hale.
David Hale?
First.
I'll give you second.
Don Nugabauer.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Anna. So, okay, the hearing is open. And, and we don't have a great audience to target here, but if anybody's listening, we'll keep the keep the hearing open until we've heard from the applicant and we'll ask all our questions and at some point we'll, we'll close the hearing and hopefully we can make a determination tonight. As I said, we can't take a final vote, but we can go through the, our procedure and analyze the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the community and and make a decision, at least do it, take a straw poll tonight. So I'll ask Richard Cody again, if he's got, you would like to make a presentation, tell us about your project.
Okay, um, my wife and I, Lisa, first of all, thanks everybody for taking the time to to look at this and help us out with this. I have to say it's been really, it, it's been somewhat of a complicated situation. I've been, I was on the town of Manly's CBA for a long time and this is probably the most complicated thing that more complicated than anything I ever saw, so. But the, we purchased the property three years ago with the intention of running the farmhouse as it exists as a bed and breakfast, which we are doing right now, but we're running it from Fayetteville. Our intention was to to buy the property, run it as a bed and breakfast and eventually take that barn that you all are looking at on lot two, which was built in 1835 and reclaim it as our primary residence so we could be there to run the bed and breakfast. And what, what we didn't realize was, well, the, the amount of trouble that we'd run in because the, the lot exists, I mean, we knew it when we bought it. But the lot was in both Onadoga and Madison Counties. So in order to divide the lot, it was Jamie was helpful in pointing this out, just saying, look, the only way the ZBA, he basically reminded me, the only way the ZBA can do this is that they've got to look at it, just what's going on in Pompey. So all these different variances. Now where the, if you look at the map where the barn sits, that barn will probably be.
Sorry, do you want the map back up?
I, that's okay. No, it's fine. I can just explain it. That might not be exactly right where it is. It'll probably be anywhere from 10 to 20 feet back towards the rear of the property than it will be the road. So that, that understanding that you have to have that variance as it stands right now, but when we try to rebuild it, because the, the foundation's a mess, it's, it's, it's almost impossible to rebuild and the per current stand, the current conditions it's in, it's going to be right there. But so what happened was in order to do that, we had to split this lot and subsequently it created all these different variances that were needed because the, both lots become nonconforming because you can't take into account the, the area that's also in Madison County. So we went to the planning board, they, they looked at it, referred it to you all. You all have to make your decision on it, then, you know, we have to go back to the planning board next week. But I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do that now based on what I just found out tonight, that this didn't get referred to the county yet. But that, that, that's okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that you all didn't have any specific questions that, you know, that I couldn't answer, but I'm, I've been over this so many times that I'm happy to talk about whatever you guys would like to know about the property. That's a
okay.
Explanation that I would give.
Good. All right, thank you. And I'm sure we may have some questions.
Okay.
Rick, while I'm thinking about it, I just, if I can just point out, we will have the meeting because the public hearing is open and we'll do, you know, we'll, we'll go through the public hearing anyway.
Okay.
That's on and published.
I hope all the members have gotten a chance to see the property. You're probably familiar with it anyway. And at least as a drive by, I had the opportunity to observe the, the planning board meeting, where they discussed this informally. And in, in general, they seem to be in, in favor of the project, so it was good to, to hear that. And that's, you know, for their part, it's the subdivision that they were talking about. So I'm not sure how much else we can, I can add at this point. We have any questions from the board?
I, I don't have any, Dave. I've looked at property over, I see what they're doing. So if anybody else has any questions.
Okay.
The only thing that I would ask is, um, the buildings that are there on the property and require a variance to the setback, those buildings have been there a very long time, I believe that they're not recently built.
No, they're all old buildings.
That was a working farm years ago.
Yeah, there's the Bly farm.
Right, and Don, if, if it weren't that they were looking for a subdivision, we wouldn't even look at, even look at it. But as soon as you, you invoke a part of the code, then you have to make sure everything matches.
I agree, I, I did drive by and it the, what you're seeing does, to me, does not look like a, a problem, I guess. I don't know how else to say it.
I agree.
Anybody else?
Across the street, yeah, it's all wide open across, so.
If, if, if I can talk about the Casanova property. So this board has no control over the Casanova property. But to the extent that its existence informs whether this is a good idea, certainly you can, you can take that into account.
We refer this to the town of Casanova, right? So have we heard anything from them?
I have not.
Okay.
Dave.
Required.
I have, I have spoken with them and
Oh, good.
What I'm assuming, they were looking to see what you all would do because essentially the variances and the granting of it had to been, has, has to be approved in Pompey because that's where the buildings are going to be. But they said as long as Pompey approves it, they wouldn't have a problem with it, but I still suspect I'm going to have to, once, once I have your approval, I'm, I'm just done this enough, they're going to, they're going to want to at least have some sort of meeting about it, I guarantee it, they're not.
Okay.
Which is fine, that's okay.
Yeah.
What is the minimum lot size in Casanova?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but if they, if it's less than, you know, I would imagine it's got to be at least one and a half or two acres of the thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe they're going to make me get a variance for the state that.
For the small lot, maybe.
They could, I, I don't know that.
Lot one or two that's encroaching on the Madison County end.
Both.
They both do.
Both.
Okay, okay.
Rick, is the Casanova piece one piece currently?
Yes. Yep. Yep.
So you're dividing the piece in their county.
Yes.
Town, so they would probably have to weigh in on that subdivision. Okay.
Yeah.
What, you, you.
But one thing, they could, you could just, sorry, Dave, but they could just not do a subdivision in, in the town of Casanova, correct?
I think that's correct. Yeah. Yeah.
So, so that this could in fact end up being just, just that 1.4 acre or whatever we said they were going to be.
So it could be common three lots.
One of, one of. That's correct, they could say that. Well, they, they could just say, look, we're just going to leave that lot alone and this is going to be.
Does, does either of that bother you in any way? Do you have some grand plans for this land and?
No, honestly, the, like I said, we're going to move that barn potentially depending on, because we had to take two other barns just that, that were pretty much they were falling in on each other, so we, we took them apart as best we could and reclaimed the wood. At some point in time, potentially there could be another barn possibly up in that, on that, on that lot, but right now there's no, we don't have a plan for it.
And okay.
Have to go to CAS to get that approval, so.
Well, sure, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What needed to be sent to the county? I'm just trying to figure out from my checklist.
A.
It's a, it's a referral, but Marion, we can talk about that tomorrow. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Standard form and standard procedure and so. Well, as I mentioned, the the, the whole premise of, of variance is based on the the balancing of the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the community. And we've all gone through those, those five standards of proof or, or questions or tests that lead up to that. And we probably should do that for the record. So I will go through that and if you have any comments and we, we should enter these into the record. So we should consider whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. Any comments on that? I'm not sure I'm looking, seeing any other feasible means. These, not able to buy more land here, he's he's stuck with these dimensions that he's given. So.
The buildings are already there, so there's no, no way of moving the, the main house, that everything's.
They are moving. Well, the barn is being moved.
Yeah.
Right. The barn is being moved, so, so that will be his primary resident. The barn could be moved so that it complies with our ordinance.
Yeah.
What, what would happen if you don't subdivide? There cannot be two residents on that same parcel.
Right.
Correct.
So there's not much choice there. If he wants a second house, he's got to have a division. So I don't see much other means feasible to applicant here.
Okay, so what, what's, what states that there can't be two residents on that size lot on a, what, what is that, six and a half acre? What is, what is the code that says that there can't be two residences on six and a half acres?
In general.
I would have to pull up the exact the exact code section, but it's, it's the, it's a single, it's a single use. The single, you know, you could have, you can have a residence and accessory structures, but you can't have two houses, two primary residences or residences.
Yes.
Even though the one is a business.
Correct.
Well.
Well, let, let me, let me talk about, just about that, about the bed and breakfast. Again, that's not something that is, that we're looking at specifically. About the use or anything like that. Right now, he's saying it's used as bed and breakfast. I, I don't know what that all, you know, entails. But the only thing that this board needs to look at is their, their residences.
Right, for zoning purposes, it's a single family residence and the other one was going to be a single family residence when he converts the barn. And those are both allowed. When he goes to convert to something else, that's an issue between him and the code officer and might need other town action.
Bed and breakfast, the bed and breakfast isn't approved use in that zone.
Okay, so that's, that's good, that's just that's, again, that's between you and the town and the code officer. So moving on with the list, is this an undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties?
No.
I certainly don't think so.
I agree.
Well, it is. Why do we have the two acre zone? Why are we zoned for two acres in the town of Pompey? If that's what is desired and that's our code, so yes, it becomes undesirable.
So the, the change in the neighborhood is because it has too small a lot or a smaller lot than others?
Well, that's what we've decided in the town of Pompey. So that is not, we do not desire smaller than two acre lots.
Okay, so.
I don't care if you want to change the zone, change the code, that's fine, but that one is, that one is yes, that one is definite yes.
Okay.
Not that it has any bearing on the outcome of this, but.
Right, right, we do, we have to look at each of these and then, then weigh them all together. So whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, that's generally for any
Yes.
environmental issues, extra drainage or and I don't see any change to the physical change to the property except for moving the house, moving the barn, I mean. He's already torn down a couple of barns. He's already torn down a couple of, of barns. That's, that's roofs that are gone and, again, that's, that's the issue, yeah, it, going forward with a building permit and the code officer, I think. But the actual subdivision itself, I don't think is gonna have any adverse, uh, environmental effects. Uh, whether.
I disagree there. It definitely will. Yes, it will. Uh, we, we decided that a two acre lot is what we want. So this is gonna have a greater impact because you're gonna have another well and another septic system on a smaller than ideal lot. So it's definitely gonna have an impact.
Okay.
You're still remaining, you're still remaining, uh, two a- two, 200 foot road frontage for both of them, correct?
Yes. Yeah, they do have that.
So as far as from the road looking in, you're still gonna have an allowable lot.
Yes.
Visual wise.
Yeah.
David, could you please re- read that last, um, note that Pat was disagreeing with?
Whether request will have adverse physical or environmental effects.
Pat, were you disagreeing with the, uh, environmental effect or?
Both. I, I don't have a problem with the, the project. So don't, uh, get me wrong here, but I think we should answer these questions correctly.
I.
Okay.
Wanted to get clarification on the answer.
Yep. Definitely will because it's a non-compliant lot. And we've decided in the town of Pompe to have a plenty of room for your well and your septic system. And, and, uh, just general space that we want acres, minimum for your lot.
Right, right.
Anything less than that is having an adverse effect. Or for the forefathers that made these rules.
Okay.
If, if I, if I can interject on that, I, when the fact, just because someone is asking for the variance, doesn't mean it has an adverse effect. That, so the town, no matter what it is, the town has set up the rules. So it, it might be, but I, I think it, it needs further discussion because if you can reasonably look at this property and say, you know, it's, it's what you see and what you're always gonna see, and it's not really going to adversely affect, um, the look. That was the previous question. Or, or the neighborhood. You know, that, that's a question. It, not whether it meets the code because we already know it doesn't meet the code.
Dave, is the hearing still open?
Yes, it is.
Okay, um, I think a- as you, a- as you're going through the list of criteria, I'd only ask the board to consider, I, I, it's, you, you're, you're right because you're just looking at the lots as they sit in Pompe. But like, for example, and Patrick's saying, you know, it's not, it, it does have an adverse impact on the, you know, the, the health, safety and welfare of the surrounding community from the standpoint, yes, it is a septic, but I would only ask the board to consider the fact that you've got that, unfortunately, we, we've got that property line behind us that constrains us to have to look at this just in Pompe. But there is, there's a lot of land around that area. And that's the 1.4, and it's hard, this is what makes this very difficult. And I, I, I understand Patrick's concern. It's, he's correct in saying that.
And it relates probably to the last comment, which, uh, whether led to difficulty is self-created. And, uh, almost always it's self-created because you, you, you're, you wanna create two, two new lots.
Correct.
But in, uh, so.
It does have, it does have a mitigate, I, I do think it's a mitigating factor on the self-created, um, possibly worthy of discussion that it has this very unusual situation in that it's, uh, so much of, there's a lot of land, it's just in a different town.
Yes.
Maybe worthy of discussion.
Yeah, so, so we're assuming that it's gonna get approved by the town of Casanova, which is a little bit difficult to do because now let's say that Casanova throws a monkey wrench in this, says no to this. Uh, we're not gonna allow the, the subdivision. So now, so now we've gone ahead and approved whatever he wants to do on a 1.4 acre lot. So that's, that's my concern. I just want, I just wanna make sure that that is all thoroughly discussed. I, again, I, I don't have a problem with the project, but let's, you know, just cross all our Ts and dot our Is here.
Yes.
Rich, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Rich, have you had it perked and, uh, located for, for a well?
No, I, I have not, I have not done that yet. Um, and more than likely, I can tell you that the well will be on the southern, um, probably the southeastern part of the lot, uh, of the, by the barn, a corner of the barn, somewhere in that area.
Of lot one?
Of lot one. And more than likely, the leach field will probably be somewhere on the northeastern side of, uh, the barn.
Okay, so it's not gonna interfere anyway with the lot too?
No, no, because actually on lot two.
Lot is smaller.
Yep, lot two, the, um, uh, the, uh, the well is probably about 45 feet north, right on the other side of the driveway of the house, of the farmhouse.
I thought I saw a well stand pipe right there.
Yes, there is. And then the, um, and the, the, uh, uh, the septic system runs off the southeastern corner of the house towards that other, towards the chicken coop and the other barn.
Okay, so it's between the two buildings there?
Exactly. So the, the plan would be that, that, the, the two septic, the, the two leach fields would, would more than likely be at least, uh, I, I, and again, this is just a rough estimate. It might be like maybe 300 feet, 350 feet apart, 400 feet apart.
So, uh, also, remember this, um, after the subdivision, it's gonna have to go to Jeff Till over at county. He's gonna wanna see that design and the, the subdivision will not even be filed and, and can't move forward until that septic design is made and approved.
Yeah.
So it's another.
Another hurdle. Yep.
Back to the town of Casanova, we can approve our subdivision and, uh, it really doesn't matter much if they approve the other one or not, at least not to me.
So the other thing that we, we can do if, if we're inclined to, um, if this board is inclined to go forward with this, uh, we can do a formal, uh, request and recommendation to Casanova that that, um, subdivision, be granted. Uh, that it would be preferable for the, the workability of these lots. The other thing that was discussed at planning board was, do, and to make sure that these lots in Casanova and in Pompe work together, that there would be an, an easement, a permanent easement that could not be, um, discontinued without the, uh, permission of the town.
Is that, is that something that we or the, or the, the planning board would request of Casanova? How would that work?
We can. Well, we've got, we've got time now because we've got another meeting, but, um,
Yeah.
It, it can certainly come from a joint from the ZBA, um, from you and Sue. We can do a joint letter and, and make that request of them. Now, we're not going to necessarily get an answer and, and nor, y- you know, do, would this board necessarily want, want to wait, but that can certainly go out there. You know, as a municipal cooperation. The, the, the more specific thing that you might want to consider and, and, uh, Rick, I don't know. I know that this was talked about at planning board, if you remember, about easements that would go back and forth to the CAS lot from these lots.
I, I wouldn't have a, I, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I'm.
Okay. Good.
And, and, uh.
So that's something, that's something we could consider as a, a condition to any kind of vote.
Well, yeah, see that, that's the kind of where I was coming around to is that we in the town of Pompe are creating two very small building lots that it really may have or may have nothing to do with the lots in Casanova because now those, those are totally independent lots. So there's really four building lots. If we, if this goes through, there's actually four lots there. Two of which are in Madison County, we have no control over and could be, you know, I know that's not his intent to have four building lots there, but he's gonna be well within his, uh, rights to do that.
You know, I don't know if I can, because you know what? I don't think that you can get a curb cut on that section of Route 20. Yeah, I would question that too, so.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, uh, honestly, Patrick, I don't think you can, I don't think that that's allowed there. That, that, that's a really, really dangerous part of, um.
Don't they have lots or building across the street from it though?
Yeah, it's at the bottom though. That, that entrance is right at the bottom of the hill.
Oh, there's one right across the road from it, brand new one. It's not, it's right in the very same, uh, I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna argue about that anyhow.
No, no, it's okay. I'm not.
Yeah, no one's, uh, none of us had that answered, whether it can or cannot have a curb cut there. I, I believe you could, um, but irregardless, so.
Yeah, well, it's got our plan to subdivide that property for the board's purposes and knowing we don't wanna do that.
That's, yeah, I would feel more comfortable if that, the barn, was in the, in the town of Pompe or Casanova, the house or that reclaimed house. And it's somebody else's problem.
Well, we still got a, the, the hearing open. Um, is, is, is there anybody on the, uh, is anybody called in to us asking for a comment to, to participate?
There are currently no comments or questions on Zoom at the moment.
Okay.
If people want to ask a question or comment on Zoom, they can.
Right.
Via chat or the Q and A, or they can, um, raise their hand and if they wanna, um, ask to be unmuted and they can comment with audio. And the people on Facebook can also comment if they so choose. But right now, we have, um, nothing at the moment.
Okay. Uh, given that, should we, uh, should we close the hearing and, or, or since we're coming back next week, should we adjourn the hearing to the next meeting?
I do have one question that has come in.
Okay.
Um, from Neil Moore on Zoom. His question is, can both properties be air, be an Airbnb?
I'm not sure I have an answer to that. That's a zoning, again, a code enforcement question. And we're, as far as we're concerned, they're a house, they're a single family house. And, uh, if one can be an Airbnb, so can the other, I think, but.
Excuse me.
We have no intention of running that house as an Airbnb.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's gonna be our home.
Yeah, right. Okay. So again, if we wanna move this meeting on, we should, uh, we have to vote on our seeker issue. We have to, uh, either continue the hearing to the next meeting. Or, uh, close the hearing. And thoughts, members?
David, do we have the, uh, right to approve the contract? Who's the project contingent on the county's response?
That's, uh.
No, we, no, we cannot. It's jurisdictional. It would be, um, considered not approved.
Right. So.
So I got quite, Dave, as far as lot two, the house is there already. There's nothing gonna be done on the property. So all we're doing is just doing a, a lot, uh, downsizing that lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, there's no new well, no new septic. That lot is just being, being reduced.
Yeah.
Okay.
With, with, with the existing structures on them.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
If there were no existing structure, for example, where the barn lot is, then several of those variances would be irrelevant.
So anything that we know as a board right now that he plans on moving the barn on lot one?
Yeah. Okay. But we, we got that variance in there in case, in case something happens and.
Right, correct.
Can't move it, so.
At, nor, and, and he, whatever he does to the, the, the house, if it ends up being like a gigantic little mansion and it, and it encroaches on the, the side property yards or the the back property yards, he'd have to come back for a variance.
Yes. Yeah, if you wanted to move it further up the hill, I guess that is that. I, I don't know how that works, uh, against, uh, between the two towns. You know, right now he owns one parcel. Or does he own two parcels?
For our purposes, he currently owns one parcel.
Seven, six and a half acres. So when, when he's done, he'll own two parcels.
Now what? Now there's one.
His parcels in, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Parcels in the town are only, um, it's three acres worth.
So. So back to my first question, currently then he's got one parcel in Pompe and one parcel in Casanova. Is that how it works? Okay, all right. So when he splits this, he'll own four parcels.
If Casanova.
If they allow. Yeah, so.
Otherwise he'll own three.
If we approve this, there'll be three parcels. Then he approaches town of Casanova to create the other one. All right. Okay.
And, and there's many things, I mean, Casanova might, um, allow him to do it and say that one is unbuildable.
Okay.
Their parcel wouldn't have any access, would it?
Same Route 20 access. That'd be pretty.
They have a lot. Yeah, they have a ton of access on Route 20.
Lots of frontage.
But again, we're back to the, the curb side. Yeah, that's a, that, that east-west thing. I know that, I know there are lots across the street, but that, that, those are access from going up the hill, not from on the, on the downhill side.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we'd be able to, to do that, but that's.
That's not your intent?
That's not my intent, no.
Okay. All right.
And what, once these lots are split, where you have two partials, now you're, now you can build up to within five foot of the side, uh, sideline, sideline, right?
For, uh, side, for, uh.
For an obstruction building?
Accessory buildings, yes.
Okay.
Well, do we close the hearing or continue it till the next meeting?
Well, we can't do anything unless the county gets back to us.
Well, they've, um, I'm sure they will by then.
Right.
So we can, we can.
David, what's the difference in those two options?
Closing the hearing?
Uh, it, it closes public comment?
Public comment, yeah. And so we adjourn our meeting, uh, to make a decision, to make a final decision.
It doesn't sound like it makes much difference?
No, it just gives the public, uh, gives the public a chance to comment at the, at the next meeting.
By leaving it open.
By leaving it open, adjourning it. And it looks like, uh, October 12th, it's Columbus Day, if that matters to anybody. Uh, doesn't matter to me as far as the meeting goes.
No, I'm good.
So, uh, I guess I would entertain a motion to, uh, uh, adjourn the public hearing to, uh, uh, 7:00 PM on October 12th.
So moved?
Is that Kevin?
Yeah.
Kevin made, made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll give you a second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the hearing to. the hearing to October 12th, seven PM. Any further discussion on that? Uh, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand or hit the little hand raise thing.
Dave Hales is aye.
Aye.
Anybody, anybody opposed? Okay, so motion is carried to continue the hearing. Um, so I will, we, I guess that closes it for tonight.
If I, if I can, um, what would be helpful, and, and it's not a decision by this board, but if there are, um, issues that are of concern, that could be addressed by the applicant between now and the next time, and if, if kind of from a, a straw poll standpoint, uh, this board thinks that, um, this variance is, does, you know, is the benefit to the applicant, um, does it outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood and the community in general? I, I think that a discussion should be had, or are we talking about any kind of conditions? So that those could be pursued by the applicant before we next meet.
Um, the other thing we should do, I think we had to do this tonight, is, uh, uh, vote on the seeker, environmental review. Should we do that now or?
We can do that.
Okay, um, because it's, it's fairly simple in this case, uh, this, it is a residential property and it's a request for an area variance, which is a type two action that no, and no further environmental review is, is needed. Uh, so we need a motion that says that, uh, this zoning board appeals is the lead agency and it's a type two action. And no further environmental review is needed. So if someone wants to make that motion?
I can do that, Dave. It's so moved.
Pat, thank you. Somebody want to say something?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Alright, thank you. Any more can comment on that? If not, all of you in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Very good, so, the decision, uh, I talked about, uh, a straw poll, just for the benefit of the applicant and us, so we know where we're going. And, uh, as Jamie pointed it out, and if there are any concerns, we should raise them, so that applicant's got a a chance to get back with some responses and, uh, do we want to consider a, uh, condition or any conditions? But we did talk about a condition to, uh, some kind of a permanent easement to encumber this property with town of Casanovia. So, first off, I guess let's start with any kind of condition. Is anybody interested in that, doing something with Casanovia? I, I think it's something I'd like to at least make a re- request for it.
Yeah, well, I don't, I thought that you couldn't go across jurisdictions and, and, and as far as an easement goes, uh, what does that mean? I mean, it, uh, is, how do you tie the two properties, uh, for eternity? I mean.
Yeah.
Well, you can, so it, it would be, um, uh, the, the owner creates, um, a grant of easement and it gets filed, um, and it gets, it, it says that lot one perpetually has access to, um, the property and you have a legal description, the CAS property. And same thing for, um, lot two.
Oh, it's, it's, it's easement to a hundred percent of the, the Casanovia property.
Would be right now, yes.
I mean, that's how you state it, so that it, I mean, an easement, to me, it sounds like you've got permission to cross it or something.
Correct, correct. That, that's what it would be. That's the only thing that we could do, because there, there's the ability to do that on this, this, um, Pompey property.
So the best we can do is request that or request that the applicant request that. We can't require it, I don't think.
And, uh, I don't, I don't know, doesn't that have to be done between towns?
Yes.
No, no.
I, I would just request, so is that a secondary, like, request to the planning board or to the zoning board that I?
It's a, it's a totally, it's a, it's a legal, um, document. It's a grant of easement. A lawyer draws it up and then.
That's where this, that's where the problem all started with this thing.
We're trying, we're, we're trying to, I'm trying to redeem the lawyers here.
I know you are.
But I, you know.
How does the easement? Yeah, yeah, I don't understand how the easement prevents, that gives, uh, access permission to the, to the owner of lot one to enter the, the back, the Madison County portion of lot one. It gives them permission to do that. I don't, and so.
It, it gives them the perpetual, it would give him the perpetual right to do so. So who, whomever the owner of that lot is would have the perpetual right, not able to be extinguished, to have access over that, uh, to that property.
So I don't see what, how does that preclude anybody else from owning that Madison County portion? And doing whatever they want with it, knowing that, uh, the owner of lot one can, uh, walk on their property. That may be enough.
That's exactly, that's exactly what, that's exactly what it would do. It would possibly discourage someone from doing something else on that property. Again, that, that, it's, 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 I don't know that it's harsh. I know that it's the only thing that I can think of that would, if you wanted to encumber that in some way, because we have no direct control over it. That's why I'm bringing it up, not, I'm not saying you should, I'm not saying you shouldn't. I just want you to understand what it is, and yes, you're exactly right, Pat. It would encumber that. Peace.
Well, that, that, that's what the applicant has asked us to do, is to not look at this as a 1.4 acre parcel, but to, the entire property, and the only way you can do that is if you lock them in somehow.
Which we're fine with, we're, we're fine with, that's what you gotta do.
Yeah.
So we, we can make that a condition. Approval.
Yeah, the simplest way possible with least cost involved.
I, um, to do that. If, a, a, and as, if the rest of the board can weigh in on this, and if you have any questions about it, let me know, because before the next meeting, I'll, I'll prepare some draft language so that, um, you would understand what like, what you're requesting.
Okay.
The easement.
Amy, could you clarify the, the suggestion or the recommendation you're making?
Right, so again, it, I, 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 it's for informational purposes, but if there is a, there would be a document, it would be called a declaration of easement. The owner files this document and it says, the, um, property, legal description in lot one in the town of Pompey has perpetual access over, um, the lot line to access the property at Casanovia legal description. So whatever, uh, Mr. Cody has those legal descriptions because he got deeds. And then the document says, this runs, um, to the benefit of lot one forever. And it can't, and it can also say on a condition that it can't be modified without, uh, the permission of the town of Pompey.
Well, right now, he currently owns both properties. So that would be in case that there was a sale of one of the properties.
Right, and, and a, and a property owner can encumber their own property with, with a grant of easement. Usually it's done between corresponding, um, properties, but it can be done where you, you, um, i- it's more often seen in covenants, like somebody says, I'm, I'm making a covenant on my property that, you know, no fences can ever be built on it or something. And then they sell off their piece and then the next person can't build a fence. Um, alright. Accepted.
For example, I'll give you a case scenario, um, Dave. On my property, I have an easement to the property next door to me, because there's a swale that runs from my property into the property next door. And I have a, a deed or contract, however you want to say, that gives me access onto that property to maintain that swale. I can literally have a crew come in and clean that swale or do as I need fit to maintain that swale. Without the owners of that property's permission, I have a, a legal right to go into that property and maintain that swale. That's sort of an example to, to what I think she's talking about.
Okay, a drain of easement, but it's, but between two, two private property owners.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's right in my deed and, and a property owner next door has that same paper that shows that.
Yeah.
So, eh, you can agree between the, the two of you to get rid of that, right? Because it's a private easement. Uh, if it's part of the zoning board, uh, conditions, it can say that it also runs to the benefit of the town of Pompey. So that if, if someone comes in and says, hey, I don't like that and I want to sell off that lot, town of Pompey would have a say and they can say, you know what, we don't care, fine, you know, 20 years from now and we're all getting dead and gone, but.
At least it's there.
It's there. It would definitely, when you sell the property, it's going to be there.
The state's property, yep.
And then it would say, listen, you, you can't just, you can't, can't just call Mr. Cody and ask him to release that easement. Um, you would have to contact the town of Pompey, so it's, um, it's a, it's a, it's a tool, it's done.
So let me ask the board, uh, if you guys, unless you got any other questions on this uh, condition, is this something that we want to add to any decision we make? I think it's a good idea. Does anybody object to it? Doesn't want it included?
I kind of like the project as what I've seen so far, and this easement to me is, is another speed bump or hurdle or expense that I don't see enough value in asking that to be done. I could be convinced otherwise, but as of right now, it, it, it doesn't seem necessary to me.
I'm just asking, what, what is the purpose of having an easement in that upper section? To, to gain access to it? What would be the purpose?
The only thing I think is we're trying to answer some of the concerns about what if, some future owner wants to sell off the CAS piece? And build a, I don't know, whatever CAS would let him build on it.
Yeah.
Right, that, that's all, and it's, it, uh, if there is an encumbrance of some kind on the property, it's less desirable to do something like that. It won't necessarily prevent it, by the way. It's desirable.
For the current owner, it might add some value to the profit, property, uh, in the, in the future, if you want us to sell the whole thing. Um, it is now, now has that easement on it. It might help with this value. I don't know.
And I'm also understanding what, um, Don is saying, which is if it, if it looks okay, if you're happy with it the way it is, as far as the town of Pompey is concerned, then why, why encumber it? So those are the two.
Okay, um, can you prepare us a draft or something, so?
I, I can, I, I'm just wondering what, what the general thought process is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
I just, I, I'll just add. Yeah, if I could, if I could.
Yeah.
If this project was a standalone project in the town of Pompey and the acres or three and a half acres. And the, let's say that the town of Pompey or Casanovia property did not exist, that property's not there, somebody else's. Would all of the board members be comfortable approving this project? I will tell you right now, flat out, no, for me, I would not approve this project. That would be, I would fight tooth and nail not to approve a subdivision of 1.4 acres, but but because it has a Casanovia property, that makes us all feel okay about it. So that is why I think that it needs to be tied to the Pompey property. Be okay with this project.
Alright. So.
That makes sense, yeah.
Um, so, as, as a straw poll goes, how does everybody else feel about that? Let's, I guess we got Pat's vote, if it's, if we have the condition, he'd be in favor of the subdivision. Or the variances, sorry.
Like you said, I'd be more in favor of it if that was all, like you said, all part of the CAS, part of this, part of this project.
Okay.
This is Dave Hale, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it is one, 1.4 acres is pretty tight.
Yeah, I would agree with Dave there.
Okay. Dan? Dan, what's your thought on this?
Um, I, I, I still like the project. We're not changing buildings. They've been there forever.
Well, I agree, I agree on that. I just, I like the, the bigger lot of it.
Do you like the condition?
To Pat's point, if, if, uh, if CAS property wasn't part of it, I think we'd probably all say okay to it. So I guess I could be convinced about making the, uh, tying it together.
Okay.
Does a town line always necessitate looking at it as a separate parcel? I mean, it's, it's, it's six acres.
I know, I know, I, I.
It's very frustrating to do. I mean, that's, if you wanted to sell that, the, the Madison County part of lot one, you'd have to get access from Route 20. I, that would, that's, I, that lot wasn't intended to be split. I don't, I don't believe that. I, I think it's, it's a I, intentions are, are something else, but with the Casanovia land, with the, with the Madison County land part being attached to that, I think there's sufficient, there's sufficient land, but like Pat says, if it were just the town of Pompey, if, if I put my hand over that town of Casanovia or the, the town of Casanovia section, and you look at that small lot, it, it is, it's, it's substantial.
Yeah.
But, but that's not what we're doing. I mean, that, it's not like that lot's going, it's, it's not invisible.
Right, so when, when we answer the criterion, and what I'm hearing is that when you go down and you can say that it, it's not substantial if the condition is added.
Yes, then, and I'm, I'm agreeing with that too. And I've always wanted to see some kind, some kind of, uh, condition or connection with, uh, the town of Casanovia land. And I think this is a good way to do it.
Now, would you agree with that, that it was not substantial if you, if you add the Casanovia side?
Yes. So I think.
Condition?
I think we're all saying it's important that we have this condition. And so.
We can, number one, we, we can make it a condition, and number two, we have an applicant who's willing to make it a condition.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and how much is it gonna, hey, Jamie, how much is this gonna cost?
We'll have to talk to your lawyer.
I don't have one.
Well, just keep it simple, just keep it as simple as possible.
Right.
Um, and, and, and because, whoops, did I just lose everybody?
No, you're, you're good.
I just lost my, uh, picture, but, um, because it is substantial, does not necessarily disqualify it from anything. So I don't think anybody needs to get hung up on the, that we are saying it's substantial, because it is substantial in the town, as far as the town Pompey concerned. That doesn't preclude it from passage.
Right. Um, so I, I think we've got a straw poll. I, I think I hear everybody, uh, generally in acceptance, uh, given the addition of that condition of some kind of a, an easement.
I will, I will work on that, um, on that. Oh, I will, I will work on that, um, on that language, I'll pass it by Mr. Cody and then I'll make sure that the board has it well in advance.
Okay.
To review and 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 discuss and and understand.
Okay.
And 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 make suggestions and revisions too, I I'm just, uh, I'm just the first draft, I'm just the council.
Right. Alright, um, as, and we've already adjourned the hearing to uh October. And I don't think we have to adjourn the meeting, we're gonna have a meeting to hold the hearing. So, is there anything else uh we need to discuss tonight? Anything else, anybody wants to add?
We don't need to do.
We didn't, we didn't approve the minutes from the last meeting, do we want to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
We don't usually do that, but we, we.
Oh, okay.
You've sent it out to all the members as.
I I did, I'm used, I'm used to doing that.
Yes, yes, I know the other boards do, uh, any comment on that? Folks, you want to start uh approving minutes of?
We don't have to, if no, if you've never done it.
We, we haven't.
Nor do you have to legally, so.
Requirement, so.
Not a requirement, okay.
Yeah, at s- at some point, can you guys still hear me? I've lost everything here.
No, I got you.
You're good.
Uh, at some point, I would like the to review how our minutes are recorded. Um, I don't want to bog this meeting down tonight, but I think, especially at a meeting, uh, the last meeting I had, there was a lot of opposition, and as far as I was concerned, I mean, I I was uh, it's, I don't think the minutes are reflecting the conversation well enough, h- how the discussion goes.
Okay. I mean, this is, I I I've been taught, there was, with zoning boards, there's the the strict application is that the minutes have to re- record the actions taken. And, you know, we try and do a lot more than that to show the activity at the board, but legally uh, it can be limited to just that, so that's one reason we don't approve the minutes and uh.
Okay.
So am I okay with that, Jamie?
You are, you're, you're, you're spot on, Dave.
Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, I, if I can bring up one other thing, we talked about, um, do we want to send a letter to CAS? It, eh, for any kind of recommendation from the zoning board of appeals um, as to what we would like them to do.
Well, if they approve that subdivision as drawn on this map, that would um, I think make us all feel better about uh our process, our approval.
If I, um, if we send, send a letter to um their planning board and zoning board and ask them to approve the, their, on their side, the subdivision. I had another thought, but now I can't remember what it was.
Do we mention, do we mention our proposed condition of uh?
I I I can do that.
An easement to them, that we're considering that? Oh, well, yeah, we're considering it. Uh, I would like to see that, because I think the more cooperation with Casanova, the better.
I would too.
Okay, good.
Very much, I would, I would be appreciative of you doing that.
Keep them informed, yeah.
Yeah, just so they know what's going on.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, so Mary Ann, we'll talk about that tomorrow, I'll pass it by Dave so that he can uh see what the letter is, make sure that it's.
Okay, alright. Good. Um, anything else we need to bring up tonight? I don't, I don't think there's any other business uh for us, but we'll meet next month, October twelfth. And I assume it'll be by Zoom unless something changes. Are we uh ready to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Dave Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Who has a second, Dan? Okay. Any, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Really nice job, everyone.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Jamie, yeah.
Have a good night, everybody. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan.